It seems to be 7:30. It's being televised on Area 58. And we're gonna open the meeting at 7:30. What's on the...
These two dudes.
You wanna read the...
See this? I knew you got this. I gotta find it first. Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 11th, 2023, at 7:10, 7:30, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, excuse me, Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application of Daniel Kennedy for a special permit for a dog daycare and dog training facility in a business zone located at 416 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Halifax Park Plaza and One Westinghouse Place, Suite A401, Hyde Park, Mass., 02136, as shown on the Sustlers Map, 72, Lot 10, Book 52462, Page 7. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a dog daycare and dog training facility in a business zone, as this project would violate Halifax zoning by law 1677, Schedule of Use Regulations, and requires a special permit for any business zone, area, zone business position, 994.
Did any of y'all go on the site?
Three of us did.
Yep. I didn't. I couldn't make it.
We were looking for your truck.
What'd you guys... What'd you guys think?
I think it was good to go. Got a general sense of the area and placement of things. Kinda hard to visualize 40 dogs in there, but I think there was room. If you think about 20 in a kennel, maybe 10 in the small spot with the small dogs, 10 in the larger area. It's, I think, feasible.
I think, you know, being a daycare, not there overnight.
Right.
Which is a plus, because otherwise, if they were gonna be there overnight, they'd be more of a cause of concern, because there's no outside area that they can do anything to just have the dogs go on exercise. But being a daycare, I think, I think it looks like it'll work. With the area that he has, when he pedal in the drawing, it for us a little off and small.
Yeah.
But you go in there, and then you start to see the space itself, and it looks pretty decent. And once the other walls are down, and the big section of the center's down, it looks like it can happen. And I don't think you're gonna have 40 dogs right up the bat.
Correct.
You know, I think he's gonna have to build something. It's a new business. Something's gonna happen to it, you know? I can see it growing. But the one thing I noticed, you mentioned 40 dogs, but is there anywhere saying that's what you're asking for?
Um, I'm not...
You're asking for just a daycare center? So when I read, I read it over again, there's nothing that says you're looking for 40 dogs. So my question is, can we put a limit on it? Because I think 40 might be the maximum that he could put in there.
I think we should...
I think that's a condition we can, we can do.
If you give him, if we decide to give him the permit, have him go for like 20 dogs and see how it works out. And if he, if nothing happens and...
No complaints or anything like that?
No complaints or anything like that, then we can up it to go to where he wanted to be. And before we go any further, you're gonna have to have all four, all four of us vote on the affirmative. And if you wanna put conditions on it, you know, like excess barking and the feces to be put somewhere. And I mean, they're gonna share a hallway to the bathrooms there.
Yes.
And that's kinda like a... I don't know how the people in there are gonna feel about it.
Well, I mean, that, in that respect, it's really the tenants. You know, that's part of the building.
Right.
And I think that's the way they wanna, they're gonna have a separate hallway that's gonna block off both the women's and the ladies, the women's and men's rooms. Plus, there's showers in there, I think. That was off to the side. There were showers that went down through there.
Yes.
But it looks like he's, he'll have an entrance way into it. But there's also the gym or whatever it's gonna be there, won't see any of the dogs. The car itself is boxed off, so they don't see any of the dogs. As far as sound goes, I mean, if, if the dogs are barking and the guy in the gym is ticked off, then obviously he's gonna go to the...
Yeah, that's, that's...
And you got a problem.
Yeah, that's the making sure on the barking. I mean, you got one, one dog barking, they're all gonna stop, they're all gonna stop barking.
I think that's gonna be your problem, because that's gonna give you a hard time with the other tenants of the building, because all you're gonna get from management is gonna say, hey, get this guy out of here, or he's gotta do something.
Right.
This is gonna be the same thing that I run into anywhere, though. There's always going to be neighbors and other people around. It's just something that I'll have to manage and oversee and make sure it's not a problem.
We understand, but you know, like, you put 40 people in this room, and you got a couple of them that are bushers, and they're gonna ruffle up the crowd, and it's gonna be noisy. Same with the dogs, you know? One dog barks, and the other one's gonna, gonna do the same thing, you know?
Yeah. No, I, I understand what you're saying, but there's definitely ways to minimize it. And just because one, you know what I mean? It's not always one setting off everybody. If you address it quick enough, you know why they're barking. And there's, you know, usually when there's barking, it's when dogs are allowed to get overaroused. And so part of like how we run things is just to make sure that you don't have dogs in that state of mind, because when they're overaroused like that, they're not thinking, they're just gonna bomb around like, you know, just spazzling, and that's gonna trigger all the dogs, and that's how you can start fights. So ideally, that's something that we wanna minimize right at the get-go, not even just for noise, but for safety reasons.
So, Kasai, I mentioned reducing the number of dogs from 40 to 20. Are you open to the idea of reducing the amount of dogs? I think you mentioned Saturday you were.
Yeah, I was saying I was open to like if 40 was a problem, you know, I'm happy to discuss, you know, something, especially if you said...
I mean, 40 dogs...
Additionally, starting somewhere and then working their way up if we were...
40 dogs all at once, that's a, that's a hefty number, even for the area that you have. Even though if it's twice as big as the area, that's a lot of dogs being in, you know, confined inside, not be able to go outside and roam around. If you had, you know, like the back of the building, outside with fencing area, that would be totally different, because you could take those dogs and half of them, put them outside for a certain period of time to bring them, exchange them back and forth. But this way here, they're all gonna be in this full area right here, you know?
Well, so I also have part of the daycare program. I have space in my van for 11 dogs, so up to 11 at a time could be out, taking a trip to a local park, going on a walk to be out of the building too, as well.
You know, that's, that's what you do for your business. We're just concerned about the people inside that building and try to control it, and we don't wanna have another incident like we had in the past with a different dog owner. And any...
My thought with the, the amount of dogs, I would say 25. 40 off the get-go. I know you still have to build your business, might be a bit much, but I thought it was 25. And after a year, he comes back, review, things are great, increase the amount of dogs. I know you have a business plan, and I don't know, you need a certain amount of dogs to make a living, you know? What you can...
I can work with 25.
What is your concern?
My concern is there's no natural light at all in there. I know that seems silly, but like, it's like a giant cave with a lot of dogs in it. It's, it's a lot of dogs, like, it's a lot of poop, it's a lot of pee, it's a lot... I don't know.
And, you know, like the, the smell. They're all gonna, you know, they're all gonna urinate, they're all gonna do their business. How do you plan on taking care of that?
Well, I talked with Bob in the Health Department about my plan for that, but I can further discuss here. So, you know, after each dog goes to the bathroom, we're gonna clean them up individually. The floor is gonna be sealed, so there's not gonna be any pee or urine, water, or anything getting under the floor. And the floor is gonna be disinfected, like, we'll clean, we'll spot clean, and then we're also gonna thoroughly clean the entire floor. There also is air purification systems that we can mount in there to help circulate the air extra and take out any toxins and...
So there's...
...things like that.
Can you wash the floor and, I don't know, is there drainage in the floor? Any drainage in the floor or anything like that?
There certainly isn't.
What type of floor is it? You said more like a carpet rubber type, or you're doing like a...
It's a roll rubber floor, like they're using gems, but when you, you can actually, they provide like a seal, so you can seal the edges and seal all the gaps where nothing gets in between.
And it's not porous, so it doesn't go through either?
Yeah, yeah. But the other option, if you guys do anything like that, like a lot of places, they'll do an epoxy over the cement. So that's, you know, obviously that's solid, nothing's getting through that. And the epoxy, you can also get like a textured surface, so it'll be great, so you won't have to worry about the dogs sliding and everything, so...
I think some of that's more on the landlord also. The dumpster, I think, it's outside. He just got to throw the feces in it, double bag it, you said?
Yeah.
I think it's far enough away from the bank. I don't think it would be an issue.
How many times, whether they're picking up once a week? Any other concerns? Anybody wanna make a motion?
You, number of dogs?
We're here to discuss it. I mean, it's just...
You had mentioned too that it was possible you could put a window in there?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, he said I could ask, I don't know if I wanted to always say, you know, have to get approval for that, you know, structural changes and like that, but yeah.
On the back wall?
Yeah. I know, I think also that too, that he's gonna be replacing the current back door that's there. That's solid, and that's actually gonna be glass, because it'll be a main entrance.
So we... Anybody wanna make a motion?
So you want more like, any other concerns?
I definitely have concerns with the emails we got from Plumpton.
No, I mean, we're here, we're here to the...
I did actually go to the town, and I have now re-registered with them, and I have that here, so we are coming there. And I also did bring to show that I am registered with the state as well. So this is town.
And do we have something in town? I don't know that we have any other dog daycares in town. Do we have something in town that things get checked up on regularly to make sure that it's being cleaned up regularly?
We don't know.
And I'm saying this because we've had these issues before in town, where they came in and it was like a nightmare.
At the present, we don't even have a dog owner, so...
Right.
I saw online that there was an animal inspector that did like the barn inspections, kennel inspections, things like that, separate from the animal control officer. And I called to try to contact them, but they were on vacation until like Saturday, so I'm not sure if they've been back in, but they were supposed to reach out to me, because I know...
But it does belong to the town. We used to have, we had a dog control officer here.
It was a lady, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, animal control. Wasn't there somebody else that would, like Bobby Harmon, somebody else would show up as well?
Yes, and there was another one that lived on South, on South Street, that he was animal, for all the animals in the, in the town, and he was, he was part of the state too. But no, we don't have anybody.
I just don't want us as a town getting into a situation where we've been before, where we're not checking up on it regularly. We're not even holding on to a building inspector. It's not his problem. I'm just saying.
So is there a state agency or anything that checks up on these?
They're, so they're trying to push for some type of legislation to cover these things now. It's called All Is Law, but it hasn't been passed yet, so that's the only thing in the works to do that. Unfortunately, there's, you know, really no over seeming bother right now, aside from what each individual town has. So, but I mean...
I don't even know if animal control checks up on it other than complaints.
Right, but like where he's in the back of the building with no windows, you don't get a complaint till it's too late. And that's my concern with the problems we've had before. And the fact that there's complaints from Plumpton, I'm very concerned that we're gonna repeat history.
Did they share in the email what the complaints were? Because I haven't been able to actually look at them.
Oh my God.
I know that there was also another daycare on Center Street, and our neighbors have changed. There was a brand-new house, and it's already been sold twice in the past few years, right next door, so...
On Center Street and...
Yeah. Yeah, there was actually an old client line's house that moved to South Carolina, new people.
By the horse farm?
Yeah, on the other side of the horse farm, there's a long driveway there. You can only see the, they have weed there and sometimes cows and stuff. I couldn't find anything on the town website if they were like written there, if they had a kennel or something, so I wasn't sure. The reason I was asking about those is, I wasn't sure if they actually...
They're not still a dog kennel, are they? I didn't think they were a dog kennel.
In Plumpton?
Right on the, right along. That was the kennel that we had all the problems with.
That was, that was in, off of Oak Street.
Which one? No, the one with all the problems was Bobby Harmon.
Bobby Harmon. The one that was Bobby Harmon on between Halifax and Plumpton line, by the horse farm.
Right.
That's the one we had the problem with.
But she was a breeder as well. She was a breeder.
She was a breeder, yeah. She did everything, yeah.
Yeah, she, she claimed she only had so many dogs, but...
Yep. I know we've had issues in town, but that shouldn't count against him either. We're trying to prevent more issues. My thoughts are reduce the amount of dogs and do it for a year and see how things
It seems as though it was operating without the license.
Are you gonna have cameras there?
For us to look at, but not like public use.
I know some daycares will share, I don't know if they share videos, but they share pictures and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, pictures, yeah. We post pictures daily for our clients, see their pups. It's my name on the business, so my, you know, my reputation is very important to me.
So what did you do in Plymouth? Just train the dogs in, in Plumpton?
So it started, I was dog walking and petting, and then, and then we were doing daycare, because I talked to animal control, they said if dogs weren't staying overnight, as far as it's written right now, that you don't get a kennel license for that, and then that changed. So then I switched, we were doing the pack box and training and that, so.
Now, when you, when you put the dogs in the truck, where do you take them? You take them in packs?
Yeah, yeah, and they're all on...
Right across from Star Trek, I drive by you a whole bunch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We go there, we go down to, what's it called, in, in Middleborough, the big, the big park they have there. I'm trying to blink on the name right now.
Off of 105?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, are you thinking of, is that Crab Farm? So not Crab Farm, because that one's really busy. But the other one, it's, oh wow, I can't believe them. Oh, Rocky Gutter, called Rocky Gutter, and it's like 400 something acres. It's like a huge property. We go there, we go down, like we'll do the, next to the, well, the rail trail in Plymouth, you know, down by the waterfront, so you know, just get a view and everything, just kinda bounce around all over the place. It's really fun in a way. They never know where they're going, so it's always exciting. Where are we at now, you know?
So what's the process of the board? Make a motion with conditions on it?
All right, I'll make a motion. So you can, you need the four of us to approve it, or you can continue at next meeting, and hopefully we have five? So...
I'll make a motion to approve, petition number 994, but the qualifications, it's numbered dogs of 25, and then you come back within a year, and as long as there's no complaints, you know, we can increase the number. Waste removal, daily.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's gotta be out of the building every day, you know, not in, not be inside the building.
Control, as far as the, the noise in the, in the space, I'm not sure how to put a limit on the control of the noise in there.
You can't, you know, you can't say that, tell the dog not to bark, he's gonna bark anyway.
He's gonna bark anyway. I mean, you can, you can have a gym next door, and the gym's gonna make a lot of noise, it'll be pounding on the walls, so you're gonna, you're gonna get some kind of disturbance.
Well, luckily, their hours are actually kinda opposite ours. They're open more from like the, I think it's like 4 o'clock or so. I think maybe one of them goes in during the day or something, but I think they don't have their classes until like 4 to like 9 p.m., so...
Any one of the, add anymore?
I think that was it.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just nervous among the guys.
Give him a chance.
I'd like there to be some sort of inspections added to that, to make sure.
You do onsite every couple of months?
Yeah, like just to, just to make sure everything's going well.
Add that to the, to the conditions that the board of health would be able to go there once a month to check up on the conditions of the, the conditions of...
Can we do that, though?
I don't know, but we've gotta cover ourselves from not...
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we gotta cover ourselves, you know? That, that the board of health would be able to go there once a month to kind of, to check on the, on the health of the dogs or the condition of the property.
Welcome anybody from the town, any of the boards, board of health, or somebody from, huh?
You can't say that.
No, but if he opens the doors, can't refuse somebody to do, you know, pop in to check the conditions. For example, I wanna get down there in a month, see how things are going, everything looks great, good, you know? But if he says, no, you can't come in, then we revoke the permit.
Right.
Okay, we can add that?
I'd like to add that, just because I want us to avoid getting into it, you know, into any sort of situation like that, where it's in the back of the building, it's out of sight, it's out of mind. I'd like to be very proactive with this.
And to be a daycare, nothing, no breeding, no...
Daycare only, no overnight dog, you know, capacity for maintaining dogs.
Training too, right? Take care and training.
You can do training, yeah, we have no problem with that. Anything you do between the hours of 7:00 and 7:00, I think you were saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I have three.
You okay with that?
I'm okay, as long as we're being checked up on, because I just wanna make sure we don't go down that road.
Okay. So it could be the board of health, it could be the zoning board, it could be anyone that comes down.
The selectmen.
And, and just to check in, they'll introduce themselves to you, you know who it is and...
We just don't wanna put ourselves in the condition that we were in before. And not, not to put you on the spot all the time, it's not, it's not you, it's the people that were, that did this before you, ruined everybody, you know? Not, had nothing to do with your character or anything like that.
Yeah, as long as we have that, that's fine.
You're fine?
Mm-hmm.
And I vote yes. It passes for them.
We'll just have to make sure those conditions are sent to him with his approved notice.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
You're all set?
I won't disappoint you guys, but I'm pretty sure you get both a chance. I know it's tough, so I totally get it, and I'm willing to work for you guys.
Good, I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, nice victim.
That's me. I surrender.
Don't surrender that easy. All right, what's the application for an in-law, right?
Yeah.
You wanna read that one, please?
I can find it. Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 11th, 2023, at 7:00 in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application from, I'm gonna say your name wrong, Vizna Patel, for a special permit for an in-law apartment located at 657 and 659A Mon Ponza Street, Halifax, Mass., 02338. Said property is the owner of Bella Realty Trust at 655 Mon Ponza Street, Halifax, as shown on Sustlers Map 19, Lot 866, Book 646, Page 67. The applicant is seeking a special permit for an in-law apartment, as this project would violate Halifax zoning by law 1677D12, Schedule of Use Regulations, area is owned residential commercial. Petition number 992.
You wanna show us what you're gonna do?
Yeah. I've already seen the numbers. It's Rob, Tina, and Jenny, because there was a year...
Yeah, we had an onsite on Saturday.
And, and I told the, that change, and it's gonna be the way you want it.
Okay. I asked Danielle after our meeting the other day if she could print this out for you, so I can take this out of my book, because some people may not know that you have to renew every five years in Halifax.
Oh, I do know.
And I feel like we haven't told people that in the past, but I know it's something that happens.
I mean, they should've told them when they got the permit.
Right, and where you're so close to Hanson, I think you end up having to send it out to Hanson too? Because it happens to my neighbor, because we're so close to the Halifax Hanson line, she has to send it out.
Those are borders, right?
Yeah. So this is just kinda the, the rules of it.
Yeah, yeah, so here it is. And it was a change.
So on the, on the onsite, we, we had some discussion about the short hallway in between the in-law and the main part of the house. There were, I don't know if you call them jams?
Yeah.
But the jams, extended part of the wall would come out just a couple of inches. One of the areas just kinda seemed narrow to go through, so we just asked them kinda get rid of those and smooth the walls, so it's an easier transition from the in-law into the main part of the house. And it shows out on the drawing that, you know, what we were looking for.
Yeah, I will add one thing. It's structurally hasn't changed anything, even the one we removed, it was there before. So it was, everything was there, all the insulated insulations.
Okay.
Bring the whole building to the code, which was not before. And so we tried to do, bring the whole building to the code and trying to do like things like that.
Yeah, seems like you're doing a good job.
Yeah, no, I think he's doing a very good job. You know, when it's all planned for cleaning up the property, is, I mean, that's gonna be a nice little spot, once he, once he finishes all the work he's trying to do.
As I told the members, like, it's gonna be one at a time, but it's gonna look much better when I finish it, maybe, I don't know, a year or two years or whatever.
You never know. Best intentions.
I tried to open my liquor store like as soon as I could. I thought like it's gonna be three months, six months, I'll be opening. Took me two years. It's like, it's, it's like never-ending projects, but...
The property is really odd shaped, yes.
Oh, it's crazy.
It is really odd shaped. What we thought was another person's yard is actually his. Yeah.
And as I said, like when, when I bought it, I didn't even check the property line, nothing. My goal was just to operate the... My goal was just to operate the business. And, and I end up here and I said, like, here I am.
I'm sure your parents will appreciate it.
Trying to do right things right away and whatever I can do.
Doesn't he need a certified?
I, I looked through after, after a walkthrough as well. And it didn't say it had to be certified, but it did have to say that what he builds to has to be on record with the building inspector.
Right, but don't we need a plan of the actual plan?
This is, this is, yeah, it's a plan.
This is the actual original building.
And it goes within a file and the building department gets it as well and.
And that's why I'm glad you made the changes.
It worked out well first, he didn't know whether he was gonna be able to get to the, because he's build up other, the person that does, does all the drawings Monday, but he did, so it worked out good.
Yeah. One day, one thing I would like to add, uh, I, I'm putting the deck here, which was not here for the e-gas. If something happens, fire or something, so they have the exit form from here. Just, just let you know, which is for the safety purpose, which is good. Like, there's a window right here, but I think I'm gonna put the door here and just put a deck, so that's an e-gas for the second e-gas.
Yeah.
So if something happens, if you're sleeping, they're gonna have to go from, like, if they're sleeping here, they don't have to find the way to exit here. They can just move out.
Yeah.
So it's no.
They have their own deck to sit on as well, have their morning coffee or something too.
That's a good tool.
Yeah.
But I actually added up on a, on a last room when my dad and my contractor was here and I was in her, uh, away.
So you didn't add and stuff?
No.
He's like, while you're at it.
And the last actually meeting, like, then, like there was, I told my, uh, my, my, my guy, like, make sure you're here for e-gas, just for the safety. So that's twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yep.
Yeah, he's got the shared area, the size, e-gas is good, thinking.
It was good to go down and do the walkthrough because you get a good chance to see that, that car that we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
It worked out good.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I just did.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Yes.
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 And myself, yes. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
I think the one is mine. That, the, this copy is good for you, for your records file. Yeah, we're good.
I just figured it was nice to see the conditions laid out. Cause I get curious as to like where all these things come from.
So you approved, you need to catch up with her twenty. Yeah, you got all the. Does it twenty day appeal period, so on and so forth, yeah.
I have to wait for twenty days.
Yeah.
And then they get it.
Then you get a, yeah.
Then my contractor will go to the building department and start the work. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, you're welcome.
Well, we got a, approved a minute, so April ten, twenty twenty-three.
So all those minutes, they just had the bottom date said twenty twenty-two on them, so we just need to approve those ones. The only thing, um, for the discussion that I wanted to talk about the minutes, um, because they're already pre-stamped. They already have your stamp signature on them. So do you want me to still send you guys copies in email to approve? Would you prefer if I?
We usually just approve them here.
We approve them here, we, every, every meeting.
I email planning a copy ahead of time so they can read it over if they want to.
Yeah, we've, we used to get it there the minutes before, through email. And.
While we're on the.
Just something I said, yeah, I said to Danielle, I don't ever go into my town email. It's just.
I don't even know how to get into town.
We used to get the notification for town meeting, you know, for the, for the meeting, for the zoning board.
Yeah.
I think, well, I think she doesn't have all of our email addresses.
So we lost the paper. So if you prefer like your personal email.
Yeah, just if you email us, we'll, we'll look through them and then we could.
Pre-make.
Yeah, and make a decision if we like for it.
Yeah, print just initial, do you want, Tina, do you have all the emails? Do you want to just email me with that?
I'll look up the old ones and I'll just forward it to you. That's fine, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
The ones that, um. Alana used to use. So I'll just forward her an old email from Alana and that will have all of your email addresses on it.
So we'll just get rid of the town ones for everybody?
I mean, I think it's supposed to go there in case of some freedom of.
Well, I have a choice.
Request.
Because of the, the review committee, I thought. They, they only sent them to the town, because I'm at the last meeting and they said that, oh, everyone knows, everyone's fine with the dates and I said, I never got anything. So I had to sit down with Caesar and get myself squared away, so I can do either, it doesn't matter. You can send them mine, I can take them both, yeah.
Some of the planning boards that I send them to both personally on their work.
That's fine.
I think that's probably legally how we have to do it, like send it to, in case there's a request for information. You can request the town email, I think that that works out, but I don't know if they can request private emails.
No, I don't think so.
So that's why I think all of it has to be copied to at least our town email, even if we don't read it.
Yeah, because I get, I get six hundred and eighteen messages.
Probably all two. Probably all two.
Yeah.
So do you have anything for us to hear to sign tonight?
Well, we need the forms to approve the last two petitions.
Someone back there. Well, it has to be physical, physical check.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we need to approve these minutes that are on this packet.
So we get that and the twenty-eight doesn't start until it's.
Right, so do you use a write something on a scrap piece of paper and she staples it to the official piece of paper?
Do you have it on your computer?
I don't know. This would be the first one that I've done since I got here, so I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Peggy. But the same thing for the extensions when they wrote them and the applicant signed, I've stapled it to the back and I said, that looks fine.
So maybe if we just do that.
If you guys just sign.
Piece of paper, yeah.
And then I'll just make note of it.
Why don't we approve the minutes first and then what? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes for April tenth, May first, July tenth and August fourteenth?
Make a motion to approve all of the minutes.
Second. Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All approved.
Did you write down the conditions on your little notepad or do you want, you know, just to write them on this?
Can you email them to me tomorrow and then I can type it up?
I, I just don't know how much, like what.
I think it's just generally petition and then approved and then I signature, yes and no.
First one was on nine nine four.
What about Chris King, Chris, what's his name?
When does the planning board meet again?
We just met last Thursday, so.
Most probably approved and then we all sign it.
The other one, oh, no, the twenty-first.
I probably wrote too much.
Next week?
Yeah.
How'd that go, good?
This is kind of makeshift.
That's your signature? It's just as bad.
This is my initials.
It's just as bad as mine.
See?
But see, I did it, yes. They won't get a yes.
Go on, please. Hannah goes, it's not even really the letters.
Yeah, it's like, it's pretty close.
The letters are nothing like. Imagine how bad it was after you got to the last K G in mortgage.
You want to do the other two?
They would not accept my signature.
Really? Oh, we need them to scrap the word.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Bex.
For a town, we don't even have any paper. There you go, there's one.
What was he, nine position?
Nine nine two.
It was nine nine two. You're still learning, Kurt.
Yeah. Tell me, tell me.
First page. Glasses.
What?
Glasses.
Yeah, that's not the problem. I was looking to see if his name was on, yeah. I mean, this is official.
Do what we want around here.
We get things done.
Got to do it somehow. We were high and dry for a few months, really flying by the seat of our pants.
I mean, I can always have, once I get it all done too, I can always have you guys sign.
We just want to make sure he can get going.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. I'll make it pretty and do that.
Do we have any other business?
There's one more signature I need from you guys. I apologize if you already signed it for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. In, should be in that signature folder. I'm not really sure where the other one.
It's all been signed, right?
At the top of the list.
Signed away.
Yep.
I'll actually sign my name.
Any other business to discuss?
Just a quick note on the bylaw review committee.
Yep.
We are meeting, there's, and we're gonna be very aggressive. Hope to have everything done by January. So if there's anything that you want to make changes to in the zoning board, anything at all you can think of that has been bothering you in the last couple of years, you want to make a little note, that, let me know. The one thing that I've already mentioned that I put a note in on is the, the, the part that where we have to have more than fifty percent of the valuation, I've taken, I've asked that, that removed. I don't think that's a, that is, we shouldn't put any kind of a, a limit on how much money someone wants to spend on remodeling the house.
That's for sure.
No, it's gonna go with the neighborhood as anyhow, but we shouldn't put a limit on and stop them from doing any kind of work, you know? Houses need to be repaired, so let them repair it. But if there's anything else, we're trying to get everything squared away. Be very aggressive to try and get this done and get it out of the way. So anything that you think of, just send a note in and see if we can get it into the mix.
It smells good, please.
Very good. We're trying to streamline a lot of stuff, trying to keep everything together so we look at one item, like multifamily development. Everything in the multifamily develops is gonna be on one, one section of the multifamily development.
Well, after a meeting when I had sent some notes to Danielle, I said, well, the, where it tells the person what they have to do for an in-law is here.
Yeah.
And where it says what we ask for is here. Wasn't it like, so, like, I think the in-law stuff was on page like forty-five. But then what we asked for was on page sixty-eight. It was like.
Yeah.
Yes, it was just, I was, oh my God, it's crazy.
That's what we're trying to do, is trying to, you know, take all that stuff and put it under one. So they, I would, I'd like to see everything in alphabetical order too. You know, going from trailer parks and then you have a commercial and you can jump it all over the place.
Telecommunication.
The other thing I noticed, and I don't know, maybe you could, someone might know about it. For a business, if you want to have a business in your home, there's two things in the, in the bylaws. One is, I'm trying to think of the, the right name of it right now, but one is, uh, it doesn't require a special permit.
Correct, if it's only, if it's less than twenty-five percent of the floor plan, I think.
But that's the same, that's the same ruling on, on someone that's gonna have a, that we do have, that you have to have a special permit. When you look at all the things underneath, they're exactly the same.
I think the only difference is signage, isn't it?
Is the signage. In the first group.
Signs supposed to be won by one.
Yeah, no, the signage, they don't need a sign.
They don't need a sign.
And instead, and they say, well, what's the job description? It goes doctors, I mean, you go right down the list and it's the same on the other one that you need a special. So I asked, look over that to tell me, because, I mean, if, if I had my choice, why would I come down and ask for a special permit? This says I don't need one. I don't need a sign, you know? But I mean, that's, those are the things we're trying to pick up and, and see if there's somehow we can take them out. If we don't need them, or we should have it, because I do think that you should have a, a permit to have a business in your house.
We always required a permit.
Yeah.
To have a business in the.
So when you look at those two, two issues. Because when I started trying to figure out, uh, why do we have this saying here and then four pages over? We have something else that says the same thing. So we're trying to, we're trying to take them out.
And buy them out.
It's confusing, you know?
Yeah.
So, so, yeah. But yeah, it's, it was just, to me, it was comical when I read it and I said, oh, I don't need a sign, I do need a sign. All the hell with it, I won't take a sign.
On the storage units, I'll just read here.
What's that?
Or behind where you used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they, that, that didn't pass, did it?
I don't, I thought it passed last night.
It passed with us.
Yeah.
The storage unit?
Behind, for us.
Did we pass it here?
We did.
We did.
Even though with the bigger building?
Yeah, because he like redid the front facade and he did a whole bunch of trees for the neighbor.
And the planning board's still, again, uh, still on, at it with them?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Three fifty-nine Plymouth, is it?
What's that?
Is it three fifty-nine Plymouth?
Three fourteen Plymouth.
No, three fifty-nine is.
Three fifty-nine, it's right by the gas station.
Just, they're still doing that one. I don't know about the other one.
I mean.
They haven't, they haven't done anything with it.
Well, they're advertising, they're renting it out, coming soon.
Well, you see, they haven't hit, they haven't broken ground.
Real estate stuff. If I go in, if I go into commercial real estate and I look for it, yeah, it'll say, it says like.
They haven't broken ground.
I, that's why I think it's funny, it's three fourteen Plymouth Street and it says mixed use, like it tells you all this stuff. I think it's hilarious. Like, yeah, no, that's not the case, buddy. You want to make sure it's full when they break ground, I guess?
They need the money to do it, I guess.
But yeah, we passed it.
Didn't they have somebody managing it?
Yeah, but they haven't, they haven't even designed a septic yet.
No.
And how the hell are they gonna?
It wasn't a big septic.
That's a big, big, big retention pond to do it.
Yeah, he definitely had a retention pond and then he had some things.
Excuse me?
No, so there was, they were like dividing it into two things. They had a roadway, like a deep roadway going back to the storage units. And then they were going to do mixed use of work.
And they were like.
Kind of like where you had your mulch.
Urgent care and Starbucks and.
That hasn't crashed yet.
No, we haven't even seen that part.
Yeah, we haven't seen that at all, yeah.
Way back.
We just see the, the, the storage units.
Yeah.
But they haven't even broken ground to do any of the.
No.
No, nothing at all, yeah.
We sitting there for another couple of years.
Probably.
Yeah, well, what do they have, two years with a special permit?
Mm-hmm.
They all have two years.
As a two year, this is, it's gone. They had to come back, they had to come for, for the board of health, you know, septic system and all that stuff.
Can't imagine, but I mean, he seemed like he had it all laid out pretty well when we saw it.
They're gonna, they're gonna rent it, somebody, somebody goes in there and stalls, uh, wall and, you know? He, now they're.
Wasn't he diverting the water too so that?
To the golf.
To the golf, what's been used in the water?
He was digging all the water, yeah.
I thought it was already well plotted out and all set, because well. You know those two barns we did behind? This is softball field? Do you remember saying that those were personal use? They were personal use, correct?
It was, uh, a garage that was on the, I believe the.
Garage and a pole, and a pole barn, right?
The pole barn was personal use.
Okay, but there's four electric meters on it.
The pole barn's not up yet. They were only doing one for themselves, the other's gonna be ripped out. No, that big building is the welding shop.
Are you sure? There's two buildings on there already?
Yeah, one of them is, uh, billets, tree service.
Uh, okay.
You mean the one on Calistri?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two different people that own it.
Okay.
The one is, uh, almost finished, the other guy hasn't done, hasn't finished the.
Cause I was so, I was like, I thought this was personal use and every time I try to, I'm like, there's four electric meters, that is not personal use. I was so mad.
No, they're two, they're two separate owners. There was a five acre parcel, they divided it into, into two and a half.
Mm-hmm.
And the one that lives in the house, is that little house, she owns that little, that barn there.
Yeah.
The guy that owns the bigger part of it, he has, he, he's having a hard time trying to get the doors for the, for the, for the garage doors, I mean, they're, they're big garage doors.
Yeah, they were big. They were 12 footers, weren't they?
Yeah.
No, but his, his personal pole building is not up yet, it's close to the house in the back, yeah.
Okay.
They have that, they take that big dirt pile out of the house first.
He's got lights up on it right now. Lights and a sunflower.
In the winter time, he can get a flood.
He, uh, the fireworks, he had a, he had like a path going up and all sorts of stuff.
Did he?
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. They make it fun.
I figured it had to be something that, that was screwed up that he couldn't get something, maybe that's been there for a while.
That's a project.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are kind of useful. To keep yourself safe.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to get out of here?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.